Good evening. Today is Tuesday, May 19th, 2020. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Education. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you and welcome this evening. This is a regular meeting of the board, so we are going to start tonight with comments from the trustees. So let's see, Laura would you like to start?
Sure. Am I unmuted? I am. Sure. Good evening. Thank you, Michelle, and thank you all for joining our meeting this evening. I hope everyone is well and hanging in there. I just wanted to just a couple of comments. I would like to first thank Ms. Goodman and all the administrators for bringing so many wonderful projects and celebrations into our homes through virtual means. For example, the hashtag #TuckahoeInThisTogether. It was so great to watch our students being highlighted through many acts of kindness, really raising money, volunteering to make masks. They're reaching out and connecting with fellow classmates and really sort of being present and being very involved. It was so nice to see. So thank you for that. And another virtual celebration that I enjoyed, I just wanted to make a comment on it, which I thought was done very well too, was the college acceptance day. We sat around as a family watching that and we just seeing all the students, I love this. And maybe we can make it a new tradition in addition to other things we do. But I think it was wonderful just to see the students announcing their colleges and we're so proud of them and really impressed. So that was, that was great. Thank you for that also. And then the other, just the other thing that I wanted to mention that I enjoyed was listening to Noel Simone and Anthony Jelli sing. It should have been the Music Man production and unfortunately it was canceled. But they are so talented and we really wish them continued success. It was, that was a beautiful performance that they did. And the last thing I just want to mention is this Friday, our music department and with the Tuckahoe students, they're doing a virtual service to honor the veterans and this year for our first responders and healthcare and essential workers. So I believe there's going to be an email link that's sent out. But this is just all part of, I think, what's, what has turned into a really nice adjunct, maybe in the future to our district where these wonderful virtual and on Facebook and various means of highlighting our fabulous students. So thank you, Ms. Goodman, for doing that and all the administrators. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Hello, everybody. I don't really have any comments prepared tonight. I have much to pass on. I'll just echo though a little bit of what Laura just said. I just wanted to just express my sincere appreciation for the administration, Ms. Goodman and Dr. Linehan and all the building leaders for everything they're doing to try and be innovative and adaptive with all the graduations and moving up ceremonies. I mean, they're doing the best they can. They're working basically around the clock to do that. And I think they're doing a great job, given the current situation. It's really coming along pretty well and it's exciting, some of the things they're doing. So the signs by the football field of the seniors, that was great. So really, you know, a lot of great things being done and I appreciate it. And I just wanted to kind of give them a shout out for all that hard work. And also give a shout out to the administration and Lauren Trul for all the work they're doing behind the scenes to get ready for the budget election and the trustee election. They had a very tight timetable with that. Given where the absentee ballots and getting everything printed and mailed out, just a ton, a ton of work. And they're making it all happen. And it's just really, really impressive. I just wanted to just acknowledge that. That's all I have, Michelle.
Thank you, Pete. Cynthia?
Okay, see going like third doesn't leave you much because a lot of the things that they were saying, I would have loved to have said the same, but I echo their comments as well. And really, yes, much appreciated for all the hard work that administration, teachers and everyone. I was watching them hang actually the senior banners on the fence. And they were really, I mean, absolutely beautiful. I mean, I walked by every one of them and I thought, I mean, the quality was beautiful, great tribute to them. And I was just thinking, what a great keepsake. And I made a comment to someone who was hanging and I said, oh, this would be a great tradition every year. And they were like, oh, God, here we go. It just really was beautiful. So I mean, thank you to all of you. I know it's hard. And I want to thank also Lee, Amy and Lauren for sometimes putting up. I know we push back a lot, but we, we like to be the voice of the community. And sometimes we push back because we're just trying to be that voice for them too. But all the hard work that you do is just greatly appreciated, especially all the work you're doing now. So that's all I have, Michelle.
Teraz?
Well, I'm last, so there's even less to say. But I do want to say that I of course echo what everybody has said tonight. And just to acknowledge the fact that even though we are doing all of these things to celebrate our seniors, there obviously is disappointment and to encourage everybody to kind of keep your chin up and focus on the positive. One of those things that I thought was also really great and that our junior class is also getting behind the seniors to do a doctor senior day. I think that's amazing and it just goes to show how great our students are. So I would encourage everybody to look into that because I think that's an awesome tribute and fundraiser for the seniors too, to acknowledge their hard work and the fact that this is a really unusual situation for them to have to go through and deal with. So thank you.
Thanks, Teraz. I think we all have the same thoughts on our minds tonight. I also wanted to talk about, you know, always in the spring is when we, it's really time for really to celebrate student life in our schools between the concerts and the school play and the athletics. And I just wanted the community and especially the students to know that this board, it does not go unnoticed by this board. And we know that it's a difficult time. But we do also know that you're all very talented in your own ways and that we do support you. And we know that it has not been easy. But we do know that, you know, in our own way, Tuckahoe, we will make things special. The way that Ms. Goodman and the administrators are coming together to plan the graduations and the recognition ceremonies and we are not going to miss a beat. So you know, everyone is working tirelessly to make this special, especially for those who it is the end of their journey at Tuckahoe Schools and they're moving on to the next thing. We want to make it as special as possible. So I want to thank also Ms. Goodman and the administrators, especially Dr. Linehan, for all the work that they're doing with the senior class and the senior class families. And there's a lot of coordination happening there. And we're excited to see what, what is going to come together and the way that we will be able to celebrate our students. That is all I actually have tonight. There are some other things that are going to come up and I know we're going to have some conversation about. So we'll just wait for that. Ms. Goodman, did you have comments?
Family members and board trustees. First of all, I want to thank the PTA for those great banners and the NGO who contributed to the banners at the high school. And I want to thank the lawn signs, the foundation donated that. And that was a big, big excitement for our students. I also want to let the community know that distance learning will continue on Friday, May 22nd. However, Monday, May 25th remains a federal holiday. Thank you to our teachers who worked through Easter week, including Passover and Good Friday and also this coming Friday. Now that a final determination has been made about the closing of schools for the remainder of the school year, decisions about high school graduation, senior award programs and stepping up ceremonies for students have been made. All of these milestones are being re-envisioned for our students and families, as many board members have mentioned. Since announcing our tentative plan for high school graduation, we received a great deal of feedback from our parents and our community. And I think that you do realize that we were listening to everyone, to our students and to our parents, and we heard your voices. From all the feedback, we completely understood that the most important aspect for our seniors and their families were to wear their caps and gowns and have a traditional or as traditional as possible Tuckahoe High School graduation that we can, where they receive their diplomas. I want to particularly thank Dr. Linehan and the student advisors. A lot of what you're seeing is Mr. Calasano, Mr. Abrams, Ms. Iverson and administrative assistant, Ms. Pinto, for their creative and innovative ideas, for following through on things that families or myself or Dr. Linehan have come up with or they found. Pretty much everything we found or we made up, we sort of put in. So we're having pretty much a smorgasbord of lots of things that different school districts have done. But I also think that our graduation is a one and only. And we are preserving as much as possible of that original graduation, but even with some extras. That's going to make it much more special for this class and their families than any other class that graduated at Tuckahoe High School. So I just want everybody to know that we think that our seniors, they also gave a lot of input or extraordinary. We know they've been going through a lot and so have the families. But we are very excited to put together something that's going to be a huge effort. We figured that it's going to take us 15 hours over three days to give the students and their families as traditional as possible, a Tuckahoe tradition and also to make it very, very personalized, more so than ever. So I just want to again thank all the people who had a part of that and all the other principals who are planning exciting moving up ceremonies. And all the virtual work that we have done with our teachers and again, those fun things. I want to also, Tuckahoe Reaps Together is another virtual group that two teachers have piloted. Abby Benedictus and Sonia Brown are doing breakfast with buddies. Breakfast for but, I made it up too and I forget, breakfast with books, that's it, for Cottle and literature for the middle school. So during lunch or during breakfast, reading groups are coming together. And also today, again, it is important to recognize the millions of Americans and those right in our own community who continue to bring joy and light in the lives of our neighbors and friends with incredible acts of kindness and caring. Tuckahoe In This Together that Laura mentioned has really taken hold. Please go on Facebook and you can see all the work that our students and our families have done. Thank you to the parents and students who have been patient and cooperative and worked hard through this pandemic. I believe we are winding down the school year sooner and we are planning a return even right now to the brick and mortar beautiful Tuckahoe Schools. I'm being really positive that and planning that we come back. We are planning and we will share with you more that we know. Please join us on Friday for our virtual and what will be an amazing Memorial Day commemoration, where we honor those who died and those who serve our nation. Also this year, we will honor our essential workers, our emergency response workers and our medical care workers. Thank you. You are all our heroes.
Thank you. Lee, did you have anything or did you want to wait for the budget presentation?
I'll just say briefly that we are continuing to try to wind down the capital project. We're hoping that it will be done very shortly and it'll be, everything will be ready in time for September. In addition, we are continuing behind the scenes work in the business office. We have a finance audit committee meeting on Thursday night where we will meet our new auditor and begin preparations for our annual audit. And everything else I'll save for later.
Okay, thank you. Comments from the PTA?
President, Tuckahoe PTA was pleased to celebrate Teacher Appreciation Week by helping the students put together a video so they could express their thanks for teachers and administrators themselves. We also set special lunch treat to every faculty member to show our gratitude. We know that everyone is putting their heart into trying to make graduation special for all classes that are moving up, especially our graduating seniors. The PTA is donating to help with those efforts, including banners at the high school for our seniors, banners and car magnets for our eighth graders and contribution toward a virtual graduation service at Cottle as requested by each administrator. Application for the PTA scholarships have been received and are reviewed or being reviewed. Winners will be announced shortly and coordinated with plans for scholarship night at the high school. The Tuckahoe PTA will be having a virtual online book fair soon, which is not only a fundraiser for the PTA, but a way to support the many reading programs that the district has in place. Watch for details of that to be announced and support the PTA by letting this be your number one source of books. Finally, the PTA will be hosting a Board of Education Candidates Forum on May 28th, 2020, held virtually at 7:30. This will be moderated by the League of Women Voters of Westchester. Please forward any questions you would like to ask the candidates to Tara Zagers at tfapiano, that's letter T, F, A, P, P, I, N, O, at AOL.com by 5:00 PM on May 24th. Details as to how to view the forum will be provided shortly and then posted on www.tuckahopta.com and the PTA's social media sites. Wishing continued health to our school community. Tara Zagers, PTA, Tuckahoe PTA President.
Great, thank you. Tuckahoe School Foundation?
No, but we thank them again for also their donation.
Okay. Okay, we're going to move on now to the budget presentation.
A second. Okay. Okay, sorry, I got to escape this. Okay, there we go. The Tuckahoe Union Free School District 2020-2021 Budget. As you can see, this is the 2021 budget presentation for the Tuckahoe School District. We have been in development with this budget since early March, when things were very different, actually. Our overarching budget development mission is to design a responsible budget that meets the education needs of our students and fiscal needs of our school district and community. This budget raises the tax levy only 1.97%, which is below the maximum allowable tax cap permitted by New York State. Also, please see all our budget presentations. They are online at www.tuckahoschools.org under the budget information part. So you have seen this slide before, but I want to thank you for your partnership in fostering student success in Tuckahoe School District. We would not be in the position of celebrating gains in academic and extracurricular achievement and growth without our support of faculty and staff and also the support of our parents and community. New York State Recognition School Designation places Tuckahoe High School among the top performing New York State schools under the Every Student Succeeds Act that have high academic achievement, growth and graduation rate and have made progress. And as you can see, we've gotten kids into top colleges, kids are very involved in music and art and athletics. We had a lot of great wins this year and we have a lot of points of pride in our performing arts, our one-to-one program, our STEAM program, our special education program, Writing Revolution. We have School Resource Officer and we have a great capital project. And our budget preserves all that. Our lens for the budget is based on our strategic plan. Excellence for all beyond academic achievement. Our goal in this plan is prepare students for success in a global economy and a global community. Together with our dedicated educators and staff and our engaged community, school board members and our students, we are working together with unwavering resolve to provide a well-rounded education. I am confident that this budget can achieve the goal set forth in the district's mission, which as you know, is to enhance academic performance, build strong relationships and finally ensure fiscal responsibility and sustainability. If recent events have taught us anything, it's that mental health and wellness and education are paramount with excellent schools and communities such as Tuckahoe In This Together, community working together towards improving the lives of everyone. To that end, we focused on and are committed to maintaining and enhancing the classroom and the programs and made reductions in administrative costs. As you can see here, the reductions are not in the classroom, they are in administrative costs. We are pleased that we presented 2021 budget, which again enhances and supports programs in place, maintains favorable class size and enhances class size at the high school, adds research-based reading programs for all learners, focuses on differentiation and enrichment and favorable teacher-student ratios and is fiscally responsible. It focuses on contemporary curriculum, it supports our extracurriculars and our sports, high-quality professional development in-house, which saves us money, and continue to improve technology and infuse it into the classroom. It also addresses our COVID needs of deep cleaning and safety. It decreases our administrative overhead and provides contemporary compensatory education that we will need for some students with the COVID-19 interventions. And the tax levy will be kept below the New York State cap. So I know there have been some questions about what we're doing in terms of the budget. And there's been some changes. This is like no other budget that we've ever had before. And since Governor Cuomo issued an order on June 9th that the budgets will be done by absentee ballot with postage return envelopes, all qualified voters who are registered to vote June 9th will get an absentee ballot. And voters who have previously been registered in the district do not have to r-register. And voters who are currently aren't can register through Westchester County Board of Elections or the DMV. Again, there's no personal, there's no in-person registration. Additionally, this, everything needs to be in to the district clerk, no later than 5:00 on June 9th, 2020. I know there have been some questions about how the ballots will be handled and what will happen on June 9th. And so what will happen is the ballots are in by 5:00. And this is just a schematic. We are still pending legal guidance, but there have been some questions. The district clerk will collect and sort unopened envelopes by election district. We have two districts. Election inspectors take an oath prior to commencing the electoral work. Election inspectors will compare the envelopes with the register of voters. And then the election inspectors will open the verified envelopes and remove the folded ballot without unfolding and place the folded ballots in one container and the open envelopes, which are the only thing that have the voter names on it in another container. Then the results will be read off each ballot to another inspector who will record them. So they're sort of like a assembly line. And the only place where the name of the person is, is on the envelope because we are, we are very much protecting confidentiality in this type of an election. The election inspectors give their tallies to the district clerk to compile and the vote chair person will announce the results upon completion. Some important information about the budget timeline. As you know, we adopted the budget, the board adopted the budget on May 11th. There is a hearing on May 26th on the proposed budget. The budget, June 9th, is the budget vote and election of trustees. Absentee ballots due by 5:00 to the district clerk. And if you want to learn more, we invite you to the budget hearing on May 26th. Also, that's the website to review all our past presentations and also watch the mail for our budget newsletter. And we will now have Ms. Lou. Ms. Lou can start to share her part of the video.
So for our initial revenue budget, and this is where we have landed and was adopted by the board. As you can see in the third. Yes, we're on slide 11. As you can see in the center column, that is our proposed budget for 2020-2021. Our tax levy that we propose is $29,088,000, which is a 1.9, it's actually 1.97 when it's calculated by the Office of the State Controller, 1.97%. Our pilots and tax levy, pilots and sales tax, charges for services, other revenues and state and federal aid bring us to a proposed revenue of $34,293,590. And as we've discussed previously, we have lowered our state aid and federal aid estimates to prepare for expected cuts by the governor's office significantly. We are in line with what most other districts in Westchester are doing is to be conservative about the state aid that's expected because there is a potential for the governor's office to lower the state aid distributions to districts after the school year begins. Move to the next slide. Our initial expenditure budget is $36,423,200, which is a 2.65% increase over the prior year. We have significantly reined in whatever costs we possibly could as well as provided enhancements to programs as Ms. Goodman has outlined. And the 2.65% increase is significantly lower than the previous few years as we have tried to be conservative in our budget expenditures. Next slide. So if we compare our baseline expenditures to our revenues, we do find that our expenditures are 2.1 million higher than our revenues are anticipated to bring in. And we have a budget gap that we have to consider of $2,129,610. Next slide. So to close the budget gap, as we've discussed previously, we have different alternatives. We can look to additional state aid, at which time, at this time, none is anticipated. We have an option to further reduce expenses and/or increase the tax levy. And/or the final option is to appropriate some of our reserves that we are allowed to appropriate. And the board has decided and accepted the recommendation to appropriate that amount, $2.19 million, to balance the budget as we are required to balance by law. And that would have the net impact of balancing the budget. Next slide. So this slide shows a history of our tax levy on the left side and our budget on the right side for the previous five years as well as for the budget projection for this year. And as you can see on the tax levy increase side, we have gotten, gone higher in the previous two years. And we are now trending downward on the increase in the tax levy and our six-year average is 1.67%. The budget to budget increases also have gotten larger in the previous few years, but we have brought that down to 2.65% for six-year average of 2.38%. The next slide. So if we look at that same information graphically and we overlay on the top line in green, the enrollment for the district. As you can see, that enrollment has increased dramatically from 2014-15 to 2018-19, while our budget really and our tax levy pretty much remained flat. So we did do some catch-up in 2018-19 and 2019-20. And as our enrollment flattens out, we are bringing down the tax levy and the tax budget changes. Next slide. In addition to what you'll see on the ballot when you receive your absentee ballot, you will see first a resolution or a proposition to accept the budget as proposed. And then there'll be a section of the ballot to vote for trustees as well as a final proposition, which is on the ballot, to establish a capital reserve fund. This is something that the board voted on in the spring to propose this to the community, to establish a capital reserve fund. The board approved a maximum amount in this fund of $5 million, which would be the maximum amount that could be contributed to this fund over a term of 10 years. The fund would be used for various improvements, repairs, reconstruction and renovations within the school district and could only be used by a voter approval. And the capital reserve fund would be funded through various methods, depending on what might be available to the district, through budgetary appropriations, fund balance transfers or revenues not required to be paid into any other fund or account. We have not planned in this budget, any funding as of yet for, for next year in this budget for a capital reserve fund. And should it be approved by the district, the board can discuss ways to fund it going forward. So for this year, we're just asking the community to allow the district to establish the reserve fund. We need voter approval for that. Again, we need voter approval to. Again, we need voter approval to use any monies from that reserve fund. Should there be any monies in the reserve fund, we must have voter approval to spend them. And there will be no impact to taxpayers in the next budget year. So that will be the resolution you'll find after the trustee resolutions on the ballot. And next slide, there are no more. So that concludes my piece of the presentation.
Okay, with any questions or comments from the board on Lee's presentation and Amy's presentation? We've been through the budget quite a few times, but I think it's still important to keep.
I just, I wanted to just mention one thing because I know that there was concern out in the community about like voter confidentiality. And I really want to commend them in coming up with like such a real solid plan that assures people that their confidentiality will be protected. So I think that was a great presentation, great plan that you laid out and should make people feel okay knowing that their, you know, vote will be kept confidential. So thank you for putting the time in and great presentation for it.
No, I think it's important to let the community know the very short amount of time that the district has been given, all districts have been given from the state as to how to put this together. It's really been quite challenging. And I want to also commend Lauren, our district clerk, for all her work there. I do think it's important to note that, and I think in Ms. Goodman's presentation, she did note that it's still under some, you know, still seeking legal guidance on certain points there because we just don't know. And our attorneys don't know because there isn't really clarification, a complete, total, solid clarification. So as we get new information or if anything changes, we will clearly communicate everything to the community. So I think it's just really important to know that obviously this is new for all districts. The crunch time is quite stressful because the state has not given us time. I do commend that we did come out early to, to support the budget and to pass the resolution on the budget so that we could go forward, so that all this work could be done in a timely way that ensures everyone in our community does have their right to cast their ballot. And that is the most important thing that we can do. So I just want to commend everybody who's working on that. I did want to just ask a couple of questions to Lee regarding the state aid. Because you didn't mention that, and you know, I don't remember ever hearing this ever before, not tonight. I mean, ever before in other budgets or in, I don't know. Does this happen where state aid can be cut after the start of school year?
It's never, in my experience and anyone I know's experience, ever happened before that they've cut state aid after the budget has been passed. There have been, during the 2007, '08 economic recession, there were gap elimination funding or reductions to state aid. But we always knew about those in advance before a budget passed. This is the first time ever that they said there will be various points in the year where the state would have to reassess and see if it had funds available to provide the state aid that it's promising. So we are really in a bind at this point, not knowing exactly what might happen on the revenue side of our budget. And we're taking the best precautions we can based on the information that we can gather at this time.
Okay, so let's, you know, worst-case scenario, that should happen. Then, then how do we proceed from there? I mean, I guess it's hard to know, not knowing how much money, what the consequences could be.
We would have to really carefully reassess where we are at that point in time. We may have to put a freeze on spending. We might have to consider appropriating additional reserves if necessary. Other options would be to make spending cuts midway through the year. We'd have to see if there might have been any other revenues that might be ahead of budget that might counterbalance any cuts we might get from state aid. All those things would have to be addressed if we, as we get more information going forward. So it would be my recommendation to proceed very cautiously throughout the first part of the year and see where we are at all the key points that the governor's office has mentioned.
Right, that's why we try to, you know, make some bold cuts this year, going into next year. So we, the worst thing that would happen is if we'd have to, you know, make class sizes bigger or put classes together. And we're trying to avoid anything like that. So we looked at really our administrative costs and we would continue to have, you know, to be looking carefully to not hurt programs the most, as, as much as we can. Because we know that it's not just, it's not just the academics. Our kids thrive on all our other programs too.
And but I think, you know, now is a time where we really can take advantage of the fact that we have been fiscally conservative over the years and we have a healthy reserve. And if worst-case scenario, the reserves are there. And that is what we have always said, you know? It's there for the rainy day. And let's hope that the state doesn't do that and cut our funding. But fortunate for us, because many districts are not as fiscally sound as we are. You know, I think the planning for this has paid off in that aspect.
I have to agree. Kudos to Takahao, to the board for doing that. I know that you've been questioned about it at different times. And, you know, you never know when the rainy day is going to happen. And we are very fortunate that we do have reserves. And we want to keep having them because this shows us anything, that things can really happen. We need to be prepared.
Absolutely. Were there any other comments from the board or questions?
I have a question. I have actually a question regarding the timeline for Amy, and then I have a budget question. Sorry, Ms. Goodman. So the timeline for, when you were giving the timeline about the ballot, you mentioned June 9th. I was wondering if you could, or, I'm just trying to think here, if Lee or Lauren would maybe be better at the timeline. But in other words, when are things going out? When should people anticipate receiving? Because we really just talked about the 9th and the ballots coming in on June. So from now to then, if you would just explain the timeline of when things are going out so that people watching right now can anticipate when things are going to happen. Does that make sense?
Yes, yeah, so we've been working. I'll let Lauren answer a lot of this because she's been taking the lead. But again, as Michelle said, the fact that we approved the budget as early as we could, it gave us a head start, being a little district and just a few of us can work on this. Whereas, you know, other districts have teams to really get this done. And there were some stags, you know, with printing companies and all of that. But Lauren worked hard on it. I believe they got their postcard already. Do people get a postcard yet?
Got it today, actually.
Got it today.
That explains, yeah. So it went out on Friday. So we can see how long the post office takes, which is something to be considered. Yeah, so Lauren, do you want to speak to that? Oh, I think she has to have her microphone turned on.
Yep. So at this point, we don't have precise mail dates. At this point, our materials are with the printer and we are anticipating, you know, by early next week at the latest. Things would mail.
Ballots that, for the votes.
The ballots, the newsletter.
Newsletter, right.
Right, the absentee ballot packets, which will be mailed to the registered voters. And then, of course, the budget newsletter as well. So the newsletter is, that cannot mail until after the hearing. So that definitely won't mail before the 27th. And we're doing the best we can. You know, the printer unfortunately is printing for all the school districts and in New York for, for the most part. So, you know, we're in line.
Yeah.
We got in line.
Thank you. And just one quick question. Lee, if you wouldn't mind, so when you talk about the 2.129, I know that we've gone through this before, but just very simply, the increase that we are putting out there and agreeing to bring over from the fund balance is primarily from what? In other words, the budget's increasing and it's attributed to instruction primarily? Or increases in, in salary, would you say?
Salaries, instructions, staffing, things of that nature, benefits related to that.
Right, so the other, all other areas, so to speak, is where we did as much of consolidating and, and, and cutting as we could. But what we're looking at right now are instruction and contractual type of things that are increasing. Is that, is that fair to say?
Exactly.
Correct to say that? Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Yep, the only question I had, just one with regard to the voting process, was is there a consideration, I believe there is, and I just wanted to know if there's an update on it, for allowing people some physically drop-off ballots rather than.
We already ordered, good question. We already ordered the lockbox. It'll be at Cottle. So, yeah, so that gives people really to, you know, 5:00 if they want to, on June 9th, if they want to walk it over and put it in the drop box. So once we get the ballots out, we'll get the drop box. I believe it already came today.
The box will be available to drop off even before the 9th? You know, it'll be set up and just there for people?
Yes, yes.
Will it be emptied every day or just, will it just stay there until?
I was just thinking about that. So we would have to work on, probably with Martin Dango, a very, a procedure so that it doesn't overflow or anything. So we probably would have to, I think, empty it every night and make sure that it was. We'd have to make some safety procedures around that too.
Sure, okay. That's all I have.
Okay, let's move on with the agenda to reading of submitted questions.
Okay, I have those, Michelle. The first question is from Allison Halloran. She says, "What are the steps the districts will take if the budget fails to pass? Specifically, will you look for feedback from the community on why it failed and how it can be revised? Is there a percentage you must reduce the budget by per state or county law before it can be put up for a second vote? And if so, where would those reductions come from?" So this is very different this year. So typically, you could submit the budget for revote. However, under these circumstances, unless there is another executive order allowing a revote with different timelines, it would not be possible to hold a revote. And therefore, we would need to go to a contingency budget. Now, this is because revotes must be held on the 3rd Tuesday of June. This would leave only a week to hold the revote, which would not be enough time to reissue absentee ballots or send out the new budget notice. So there is, you know, I know that many of you have heard about contingency budgets before. And we might want to discuss what that would mean for Takahao.
So there's a formula and rules and regulations provided by the state regarding contingency budgets. And basically, there are several factors that are involved. But the largest one is that if we need to go to contingency budget, we cannot raise our tax levy higher than what we charged the previous year. So our tax levy would have to be lowered to the amount from last year, which is $28,525. And that would cause us, in addition, we have to make sure that there are some formulas related to the administrative, the program, and the capital components of our budget, which we break out into detail. And that will be in our budget document that will be published shortly. And we have to make sure those ratios maintain the same ratios as either the defeated budget or the lower of either the defeated budget or the prior year's budget. So basically, what it comes down to is the district would have to lower the current budget by $563,000 if we do have to move to a contingency budget. And out of that $563,000, $64,000 approximately would have to come out of the administrative component of the budget as a minimum. And then the remainder, about $500,000 from any other parts of the budget. We have to remove from the budget, if we go to contingency, the following things. We have to remove any costs associated with public use of our facilities. We have to remove any transfers that we have budgeted to capital. We have to remove expenditures for equipment and furniture unless they're directly related to specific mandates or health and safety in the district. And then the rest of the money, so that right now in the budget is about $125,000. So the remaining $440,000 or so would have to come elsewhere from the budget. And typically, the only areas to remove that from would be staff, athletics, supplies, extracurricular areas like that. Any contractual obligations or things that were required for health and safety or mandated programs have to remain in the budget. As Ms. Goodman said, there's no time for a revote. So that would be the constraints the district would be under would be to go to a contingent budget.
Okay, I have one more question.
Can I comment there? I want to thank Allison for bringing that question forward because that is something that we have not discussed in this budget process. And thankfully, we have never had to go down this road. But I think the severity of it this year is very clear because there is not an opportunity to go out for a second vote. So Lee, thank you for laying that out. But again, I believe the number that you said, the cut would be $563,000. So that would be really an extreme blow to our programming, to our staff. So something to everyone to understand what a contingency budget looks like and what it would look like for our district. And again, thank you to Allison for bringing it forward.
I'd like to thank Allison too. And why it wasn't brought forward initially is the superintendent's kept asking that question when we heard this timeline. And, you know, all of the, you know, things that we have to do in a short time and what dates we have to do them on, again, with the 3rd Tuesday, we kept on asking that question. How could there possibly, we were asking our attorneys and trying to ask the state. And this is the answer that our attorneys gave us. And I believe they're right, unless there's another executive order, which we haven't seen. So it would be, again, as I told Allison and told you, in a normal time, we could go for a revote. And we could talk to the community, we'd have some time. But this would go right to contingency. And I don't think this district ever had a contingency budget, but it's very severe to programs. So it would hurt pretty much everything that I presented tonight. The next question.
It sounds like, it sounds like it would also be pretty severe, not just to programming, but to staff and teachers, which would ultimately increase class size.
Oh, yeah.
Which, yeah, is something we're trying to really preserve.
It would, it would increase class size and would, and sports, and it would decrease sports, extracurriculars. You'd start looking at those types of programs.
Are there any other questions, Amy?
There's one more question by Sue Fleming. She said, "If I understand correctly, the proposed budget in its current form is contingent upon NYSED's approval of the school district's request for a variance. The variance, if approved by the NYSED commissioner, would permit Takahao High School, Middle School to be led by a single principal. Since the budget is contingent upon approval by NYSED, would you please provide a status update on the variance application? And is there a contingency budget in place in the event the approval is not granted or not received in a timely fashion? What is your cutoff date where, if the variance is not granted, an alternative budget would be proposed?" That also is a very good question. And I did receive the approval from the district superintendent of BOSI's today. So he signed off on it. And the next step is it goes up to NYSED. From what I understand, somebody else at NYSED, because he also is from New York State Department of Education, that the first, the hardest step is to get the DS to approve it. And that was mailed back to us and scanned to us today. So that is very good, very good to hear. She also asked, "What is the deadline for the absentee ballot to return to the school?" And that was in the presentation, again, 5:00 on June 9th. "Will voters be able to return absentee ballots to the school building or are they to be mailed?" Okay, so either way, you get a returned postive envelope, if you want to do it that way, or we will have the lockbox. "If absentee ballots are permitted to be brought to the school building, what measures will be implemented to ensure electioneering or other forms of election tampering do not occur?" And that's, you know, I just got this question. But that is just what I was saying today, is that we would have, again, just like we did with the process of opening the envelopes, we, our next step is to think, once the ballots go out, of the best way to do this, to make sure that many people. and people that we know and can watch and that they're locked and that there's a process with more than one person to lock them in a safe, per se, so that, and it can't be done by one person. That's the whole thing. We need people to oversee this. But again, that is, we're trying to do that so that people have other opportunities to get the ballot, you know, in case they want to stay and think about it until the last day. We want to give people the time to think about the ballot and the budget. But we will put in place, again, and we will come up with something and we for attorney approvals. But again, we are very concerned about all the same concerns. And we will put in place the best plan that we can, under legal guidance. Good questions.
Amy, this may be, I guess, a silly question, but since absentee ballots are usually delivered to the district clerk, right? In a normal situation, and Lauren's off-site. So, where does, who's getting the mail, I guess? How will the absentee ballots be handled? Because we are going to get such a higher volume than in previous years.
Right, so that's also, again, the ballots haven't gone out yet. But that's the Plan B, where hopefully by next week, I'll have another schematic that Lauren will help me do that will show you how all of this is being handled too. It's like getting the ballot out, you know, getting the post office to do the right envelope. It's been, it's been a step at a time, but we do understand that those are all issues. I mean, nothing like this has ever been put upon a school district before. And we want to make sure that we're carefully doing it and there's not a lot of guidance for it.
Yeah, I was also going to say, I think that we should mention that this has been really difficult for yourself and Lauren and your team because there isn't a lot of direct guidance given. And there's a lot of room for interpretation and trying to do the right thing and abide by the law and executive orders. So, it's been really a challenge.
It has been, but we're very serious about making this election flawless. It's very important to us that there's no problems. So, we're really on top of it and it will be overseen.
Ms. Goodman, just to make sure that we completely answer Ms. Fleming's question. I know that you're saying that we got that first level of approval, which is the hardest one. So, likely, we're going to be fine. But in the off-chance, we don't get that second approval and we don't, we don't get the variance, what is a contingency plan? I don't think we addressed that.
Okay, so I have thought about a few contingencies in the plan because there's, you know, if worse comes to worse, there's other administrative staff that would have to come in and be the principal. And we do have some leverage, just like, you know, we don't have a full-time special education person either. So, we would have to, I mean, I'm thinking off the top of my head. We'd have to come up with something or, you know, there's enough administration. It would be boarded down more, but we would do something like that. Or we would have to rethink and cut other positions if that didn't happen. I'm feeling, so I spoke to actually somebody today about expediting it, without getting this question, I didn't get this question until later. I was very pleased that we got the first sign off, but now we have to expedite the second part, which we're doing tomorrow morning. Truly, I can't imagine them saying no, but, you know, anything is possible. And there are Plan Bs. I don't want to say too many of them because else it's going to get people worried. But there are ways, if we have to, to do this.
Make adjustments, okay.
Just like, just to clarify, Ms. Goodman, you said the first step is the hardest step to get over?
Right.
So, Dr. Cole's approval is the more difficult of the two? There's two, two levels of approval, correct?
Right, and I don't even know, I don't want to say, because I, the second one, you know, they might just say, oh, Dr. Cole's did this. And now, you know, I've done this once before. The district superintendent for the district is an important approval to get. So, I'm very pleased that we got that.
Is there any, is there any estimate on how long the second approval will take?
Well, I have people involved in it now to start so that we can, you know, state aid is very busy, just like we all are. But there's connections to be made there. So, I have talked to some people actually this evening about that. So that we can directly contact and not just send.
Great.
But just like anything, if we had to do something, there's, it's not ideal. And I think the plan that we came up with is what is ideal. But we would, we would work with it because we would have to.
Okay, so we're going to move now on to the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Teraz, second. Peter, discussion. All in favor? We're going to move on to business of the board. Number one is first reading of policies. These are procedural. These are readings of revised policies, 5555-R and 8635. These are all mandated policy changes and will be posted on our website. And if anyone has any questions, we are not voting on it tonight, this evening. And it will be on the agenda at our next meeting for a second reading. If any questions come up about those policies, we could discuss it then. Number two, approve Westchester-Putnam Southern BOSEs Association Slate of Officers slash Board of Directors and Budget. Resolve to approve the 2020-21 WPSBA Slate of Officers slash Board of Directors and 2021 Budget and authorize the Board President to sign the WPSBA Annual Meeting Ballot as attached to the agenda and official meeting minutes of this meeting. Their motion. Laura, second. Cynthia, discussion. All in favor? Oh, you know, I'm sorry, this is Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, right? I said the wrong thing. I apologize. Okay. Westchester-Putnam School Board Association Slate of Officers. You know what? I realized that because we did the BOSEs officers at the last meeting. Okay, so correction there. Westchester-Putnam School Board Association. Okay. Did we all say? All in favor? Okay, great. Thank you. I apologize. Number three, approve an agreement. Resolve to approve a contractor services agreement with Westchester Therapy Solutions for the therapy services and evaluations for the 2020-21 school year. Ask per the attached rate sheet not to exceed $325,000. Is there a motion? Teraz, second. Cynthia, discussion. Ms. Goodman, what is this, please, for this? Because normally on the agenda, it would say like last year's and it doesn't here. So, I'm not sure what our cost was for this last year, $325,000.
Less this year is up to. It's for students who get occupational therapy. We do not have our own in-house OT. So, this is services.
Thank you.
OTs, I would say.
All in favor? Thank you. Number four, approve an IPA. Resolve to adopt the IPA resolution as attached to the official minutes of this meeting. Is there a motion? Peter, second. Teraz, discussion.
So, this is an IPA that we take out through, an IPA is an investment purchase agreement that we do through the Southwest BOSEs. And it is a five-year purchase agreement to purchase hardware and other items, technology items for the district, basically as our Chromebook replacement schedule that we take place every year. The amount of the IPA is for about $90,000 worth of equipment to replace, I believe, two grades' worth of Chromebooks. And we pay for that over five years. We have that on a rolling schedule so that we can keep up to date with all the Chromebooks. And Dr. McDonald, if you want to add anything to that?
Sure, we actually have given, you know, our COVID-19 closure situation, we have reprioritized where those devices will be going. So, our current plan is to have a device in the hand of every kindergartner and first grader that we manage from inside the district. If you'll recall, we have one of them now for grades 2 through 12 that we deployed to home in KM1, got them as requested. We are now going to get them, they're tablets. They're not going to get keyboards. They're kindergartners, right? So, it's a touchscreen tablet, iPad-like. But it's Chrome-based because that is the platform we use. So, they'll get used to the Chrome platform. So, they will actually get the priority. And then, we also have enough funding to replace one additional grade level. So, in essence, three grade levels, but two of them will be new to us of having a Tucuhoe device. So, therefore, whether we're in, we're out, you know, back and forth every day, whatever it is, we will have a Tucuhoe managed device in the hands of every child.
That's great. Big accomplishment. Thank you. All in favor? Okay, number five, appoint a vote chairperson. Resolve to appoint Teraz Gardier as vote chairperson for the June 9th, 2020 annual budget vote and election. Is there a motion? Cynthia, second. Laura, discussion. All in favor? Thank you, Teraz, for serving on that. We're going to move on to personnel. Number one, accept personnel recommendations. Resolve to accept personnel action items A through D as outlined below. Is there a motion? Peter, second. Teraz, discussion. All in favor? Thank you, Laura. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right, we're going to move on to adjourn the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Cynthia, second. Teraz, discussion. I just want to say, we will be back for our budget hearing next week. That is May 26th at 7:30 PM, and we will see you then. All in favor? Thank you. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.